I think it's on, nothing working now, nothing. Hello, okay. It's on. Is yours working?
None of them are working.
Hello, hello? Thank you.
Somebody's sending us a message.
Uh huh. I have a motion to adjourn.
Tests, tests.
Nothing. Testing?
Hello, oh, we got it now. Thank you. All right, I'm calling this meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, could you call roll call, please?
So I'm calling the Housing Authority first. Right. Just to clarify. So this is roll call for Housing Authority. The holding of a joint meeting, thank you. The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council member to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. I'm gonna call roll call. Commissioner, oh, hello? Is it on? Testing? Testing, testing? Are we on? Okay, sorry. I'm gonna read roll call. Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Panduro.
Here.
Commissioner Tonason.
Here.
Commissioner Vicaro.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Bertani.
Here.
And Chair Moy.
I'm here, and I just wanted to say that Commissioner Carr is not here because he has an illness. All right, thank you.
And now I'm gonna do, um, read the process for public comments, but this is specifically pertaining to the Housing Authority. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place a matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use your raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item.
All right. So do we have any, um, public comments on this? This item?
I believe all the comments I got is for regular city council. Are there any members of the public want to speak on Housing Authority? No. Okay. And I don't see any on, well, nope, no hands raised online.
Okay. Would you please read the Housing Authority consent notice, please?
Yes. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests a separate action to be taken on a specific item.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead, since we have no public speakers, and ask, uh, I'm entertaining a motion to pass. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And no opposition on that? So it's six zero? All right. And so I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the Housing Authority now. And I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council now to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr, oh, now it's on. Councilmember Panduro.
Present.
Councilmember Tonason.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani.
Here.
And Mayor Moy. Here. And our invocation tonight, I think it's gonna be by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Lord God Almighty and everlasting Father, hallowed be your holy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. So Lord, here we are again at your throne of grace. And you promise that when we approach your throne of grace, your throne will dispense three things: grace, mercy, and help. And I'm sure that everyone within the hearing of my voice could use some grace, mercy, and help on today. And so as we, as we go toward this city council meeting, I pray that you bless us from your throne of grace to help us to do what it is you would have us do in managing the business of this city. Grace, mercy, and help, we thank you and mindful for a city council, city leadership, and residents who would take the time to acknowledge you publicly as we do consistently here in this chamber. So thank you, Lord, and please continue to bless, protect, and prosper everyone, every family, every person within the hearing of my voice. I pray it all in the name of Jesus the Christ, our risen Lord and Savior, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And I would like to ask, Councilman Tonason, could you please lead us in the, in the flag, the salute to the flag?
We join in the salute for our flag. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're gonna now turn to council reports. And I'm gonna go first to Madam Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and taking your time to be here this evening. It's always a better meeting when we have a full chamber. I am looking forward to hearing from you, so I'll keep my comments very brief. I just wanna thank everyone who participated in the listening tour that we had in District One. It was a resounding success, and Kay Patrice did a fantastic job running that meeting and keeping us all on point and making sure everybody got a chance to speak, and it was a very informed meeting. And I think we had some great discussion and came to some great resolutions about things happening in the community, so Kay Patrice, thank you. And I also wanna say that we have received a request from Paradise Valley Estates to have a listening tour to Paradise Valley Estates. And so we're now receiving requests for listening tours. Wow! So the listening tour at Paradise Valley Estates will be held on Saturday, September 16th, from 11 to 1. I believe in, in the general meeting room on campus there at Paradise Valley Estates, I believe the gates will be open to the public, so if you are so inclined, feel free to attend. And I'm going to leave my comments there, and with June's permission, I'm gonna ask that we close this meeting tonight in remembrance of a great friend, her brother, my kind of brother from another mother, Gizmo, who passed away this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and my condolences to you and your family. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, I know a few weeks ago, we had our Tomato and Vine Festival, and I know several of us up here went, and so did the public, but I wanted to give my comments based off of being a volunteer. So I did volunteer both days with the First of Us in Chamber, they had a beer and wine tent. So I love volunteering because you get to hear what people have to say about the festival, just kind of, you know, in conversation. And so I wanna say that this year, there was a lot of really great feedback. In the past, it hasn't been as much, but this year, I felt like the, the festival did really turn around, and it was very positive from the folks that I was assisting at both the tents both days. So, and then just walking it too, I think the, the energy and the amount of people that were there both days, this really shows that it was very successful. So thank you to the Parks and Rec and everyone that volunteered to make the festival a success. And then second, I attended, the Lions Club held, holds an annual prime rib in the park, and so a few of us also attended, and that raises money for our PAL Center, so for police, um, our youth activity league. So it was a great event, well-attended, and we were able to raise a good amount of money for the PAL Center, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vicaro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, yeah, it's always great to see a crowded council room, chambers. Yeah, the Tomato Festival was definitely a huge success, as always. Seems like every year, it gets more and more. Just on a personal note, too, you know, it was 15 years ago on September 1st that our young Councilman Matt Garcia was shot. That's the reason I'm here. And, you know, I think people need to remember, and I know you see his, his memories all over the city, but, you know, this was a young man, 22-years-old, a leader, you know, that young people followed, and he had his whole life ahead of him, and unfortunately, he was, you know, a victim of, of violence. So I think we need to remember that. He really had a bright future ahead of him. He was a former student of mine at Armyo High School when I was principal, and also a close friend of the families. And so, Mayor, I'd like to maybe adjourn the September 19th meeting then, in honor, in honor of Matt Garcia. That'd be great. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Tonason?
Yes, I got choked up over that. I'm a product of Matt Garcia, too. Matt put me on the Planning Commission in 2008. So he's, he's really, he's really had a special meaning to this council, and it still vibrates on here. We had our brick-breaking ceremony at the Bank of America. We're, we're tearing down the Bank of America and the buildings next to it. The city owns that entire block, it's 2.1, 2.2 acres. But we're, we're moving in the right direction, that, the downtown is coming, coming along really good. We've got a couple more restaurants coming in, one called Wentz's, and that's gonna be next to Joe's, and then the Dumpling House is in the old Starbucks building. But the town, the downtown's coming along, we're excited, and looking forward to, you know, changing the downtown and making it a walkable city. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everyone, here. With the District One tour, it was wonderful. I wanna thank the mayor again for her vision for the heart-to-heart listening tour. I think it's pretty, pretty awesome. And it was a spitfire of questions, and the wonderful thing is, is recorded. So if you do a search for heart-to-heart on our city website, which by the way, I think is a pretty amazing website, you can find everything there. You'll be able to find a recording of not only District One, but also all of the other districts, I believe, except for five. I don't think five was recorded, but everything else was. I have done, this has been an exciting few weeks. I was able to go on a Parks and Rec tour with Christina Konzinger. Thank you, Christina. It was pretty amazing, and we went to our, the three parks that are in Cordelia Green Valley. Two that I knew, and one I didn't realize was one of our park system. I thought it was part of the elementary school. So Cordelia Community Park, the, of course, everyone knows that park, but did you know, if you are a EV driver, that the EV chargers are, they look like they're about to go live to me? At least in my mind, about to go live, but they're there. And, and of course, Vintage Green Valley Neighborhood Park, and the park that I didn't realize when it was part of our own park system, the Ridge, Ridge Park Neighborhood Park. So it is right in the middle of a neighborhood, that's around a corner from my house, and just great places to go and walk and run and enjoy. But the best thing ever is that I realized for the first time that we had, in Allen Witt, we have an aquatic center. I didn't know we had that. So I went and checked it out and got my membership card, and I tell you, the lady didn't know who I was, and she's treating me, she treated me beautifully, which means I know you will be treated beautifully when you go get your membership card and, and go to the aquatic center. I've ordered my swimwear, because nothing fits right now, and, and I can't wait to, to do the, the lazy river and get my exercise on. Also, very quickly... So, the listening tour at Paradise Valley Estates will be held on Saturday, September 16th, from 11 to 1:00. I believe in the general meeting room on campus there at Paradise Valley Estates, I believe the gates will be open to the public. So, if you are so inclined, feel free to attend. And I'm going to leave my comments there. And with June's permission, I'm going to ask that we close this meeting tonight in remembrance of a great friend, her brother, my kind of brother from another mother, Gizmo, who passed away this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and my condolences to you and your family. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, I know a few weeks ago, we had our Tomato and Vine Festival, and I know several of us up here went, and so did the public, but I wanted to give my comments based off of being a volunteer. So, I did volunteer both days with the First of the Sun Chamber. They had a beer and wine tent. So, I love volunteering because you get to hear what people have to say about the festival, just kind of, you know, in conversation. And so I want to say that this year, there was a lot of really great feedback. In the past, it hasn't been as much, but this year, I felt like the festival did really turn around, and it was very positive from the folks that I was assisting at both the tents both days. So, and then just walking it too. I think the energy and the amount of people that were there both days just really shows that it was very successful. So, thank you to the Parks and Rec and everyone that volunteered to make the festival a success. And then, second, I attended, the Lions Club holds an annual prime rib in the park, and so a few of us also attended, and that raises money for our PAL Center, so for police, our youth activity league. So, it was a great event, well-attended, and we were able to raise a good amount of money for the PAL Center. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vaccaro?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, yeah, it's always great to see a crowded council room, chambers. Yeah, the Tomato Festival was definitely a huge success, as always. Seems like every year, it gets more and more. Just on a personal note, too, you know, it was 15 years ago on September 1st that our young Councilman Matt Garcia was shot. That's the reason I'm here. And, you know, I think people need to remember, and I know you see his memories all over the city, but, you know, this was a young man, 22-years-old, a leader, you know, that young people followed, and he had his whole life ahead of him, and unfortunately, he was, you know, a victim of violence. So, I think we need to remember that. He really had a bright future ahead of him. He was a former student of mine at Armio High School when I was principal, and also a close friend of the families. And so, Mayor, I'd like to maybe adjourn the September 19th meeting then, in honor of Matt Garcia.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Tonason?
Yes. Got choked up over that. I'm a product of Matt Garcia, too. Matt put me on the Planning Commission in 2008. So, he's really, he's really had a special meaning to this council, and it still vibrates on here. We had our brick-breaking ceremony at the Bank of America. We're tearing down the Bank of America and the buildings next to it. The city owns that entire block. It's 2.1, 2.2 acres. But we're moving in the right direction. The downtown is coming along really good. We've got a couple more restaurants coming in, one called Wentzus', and that's going to be next to Joe's, and then the Dumpling House is in the old Starbucks building. But the downtown's coming along. We're excited and looking forward to, you know, changing the downtown and making it a walkable city. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everyone, here. With the District One tour, it was wonderful. I want to thank the mayor again for her vision for the Heart-to-Heart Listening Tour. I think it's pretty awesome. And it was a spitfire of questions, and the wonderful thing is, it's recorded. So, if you do a search for Heart-to-Heart on our city website, which, by the way, I think is a pretty amazing website, you can find everything there. You'll be able to find a recording of not only District One, but also all of the other districts, I believe, except for five. I don't think five was recorded, but everything else was. I have done, this has been an exciting few weeks. I was able to go on a Parks and Rec tour with Christina Konzinger. Thank you, Christina. It was pretty amazing, and we went to our, the three parks that are in Cordelia Green Valley. Two that I knew, and one I didn't realize was one of our park system. I thought it was part of the elementary school. So, Cordelia Community Park, the, of course, everyone knows that park, but did you know, if you are an EV driver, that the EV chargers are, they look like they're about to go live, to me, at least in my mind, about to go live, but they're there. And, of course, Vintage Green Valley Neighborhood Park, and the park that I didn't realize when it was part of our own park system, the Ridge Park Neighborhood Park. So, it is right in the middle of a neighborhood that's around a corner from my house, and just great places to go and walk and run and enjoy. But the best thing ever is that I realized for the first time that we had, in Allen Witt, we have an aquatic center. I didn't know we had that. So, I went and checked it out and got my membership card, and I tell you, the lady didn't know who I was, and she treated me beautifully, which means I know you will be treated beautifully when you go get your membership card and go to the aquatic center. I've ordered my swimwear, because nothing fits right now, and I can't wait to do the lazy river and get my exercise on. Also, very quickly, I also went on a police tour with Chief Dan Marshals and was able to go to the investigative unit, which is in Cordelia, at the top of Cordelia Park, I mean, Library. That was pretty amazing to meet the great men and women that are working there and that are working hard in the investigative unit. So, that was pretty exciting. And my final thing is, Myco Transit has begun, the Fast Connect, and that is in Cordelia Green Valley. It started today. I didn't get to take advantage of it because at 6:00 a.m. in the morning, I was trying to book it to Safeway to get creamer, and it wasn't quite live yet. But when I came home, I saw the Fast Connect bus coming down my drive, I mean, coming down my street. And so, yeah, I'm the crazy lady with the Afro that was getting them to slow down, I'm not slow down, but stop, so I could take a picture. And I did. So, if you follow me on Facebook, you'll see the picture. But you've got to take advantage of this if you're in this district. Download the app, Ride Pingo, on your smartphone, and it just, it's such an easy flow of what to do next, and we all just have to use it, try it out, beat it up, and so they could really get some good data from us. And finally, I'll say that the Cordelia General Plan Session is next Tuesday here in this chamber. That's September 12th at 6:00 p.m. Mayor, I know this was a long report.
Go ahead, girl.
No, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, Councilwoman, I thought you might have some more. Thank you very much. That was informative, and I appreciate your attitude. It's great. It livens me right up. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I say happy anniversary to my husband, who is not here?
Please do.
But, he's being so sweet about me working on our anniversary day.
Happy anniversary, Councilwoman.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third already. Congratulations. Yeah. So, I'm just gonna, I want to say that I appreciate all my colleagues, all of the things that they do out in the city. They don't tell you half or a quarter or a tenth of what they do. They're out working every day, and I appreciate them, and representing us, representing you at all of the things that they do. I want to talk to you real quickly about something that you've read about in the last couple of weeks, and that's Flannery. Flannery talking about their billionaires out of Silicone Valley. They want to build another city out on farmland and around Travis Boulevard, sorry about that, Travis the Base. And so, I have been talking to a lot of media about it. I know a lot of you have contacted me about that. And one of the reasons I'm doing that is because I'm free to. Some of the people, some of your representatives in government are not, because they may have some of those decisions in front of them. The only thing that I'm here to do is to protect Travis Air Force Base and to protect our farms. Travis Air Force Base, if it gets closed down, we will, it wouldn't be the end of us, but we would end up like Vallejo, which is bankrupt, and with no police officers, very few, and our national security would be in very difficult shape. The city manager and I are going to be meeting with the principal in this case soon. They called me to talk to him, and I want the city manager to be with me. And what I can tell you is that for four years, I've been tracking them, plus some, and I first wrote about it on my Facebook. And they kept themselves very quiet. They were secretive, and there was a reason for that. They wanted to get as much land as they could. They now have four Manhattans, the size of four Manhattan, New York, out there. They've taken farmland, bought it, five to 10 times what the dirt would be worth, promised the farmers they could farm, and some of them, they just took that right back, and they can't farm anymore. Okay? So, we depend, you may not know this, but out there, they do a lot of dry farming. That's a lot of our wheat and so on that goes, not just here in the United States, but elsewhere. California is the breadbasket of the world. We keep losing our agriculture. We're going to be in some deep kimchi. And so, we have to watch out for that. So, that's what I'm doing. Me and Representative Guerra Mendy are working together. We got together and met with some of the principals here on our side, and he and I are going to be doing most of the speaking for this, because I've looked at it for a long time, and neither Congressman Guerra Mendy nor I have any fear when it comes to this stuff. We know we have the facts. And so, I just wanted to tell you what we're thinking about that. And I've heard from a lot of you, to the tune of like 400 so far in the last tweet. Keep it up. I want to hear from you. And I'll just say that at least 95% of you want Flannery to go away. And so, we're working on it. We're going to listen to them, see what they have to say. We're always about listening, but we have some very important things to take care of out there. So, that's all I have. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick, easy things. The first is, as I've mentioned at the last couple of meetings, we brought in a secondary company to do an audit on the ballot tabulation for the LLMD vote from back in June. They completed that on August 21st. They have confirmed that the results did not change as a result of the additional ballots that were missed in that original count. The consultant is finalizing that audit report. We expect to bring that back probably in October for a revised resolution. And then, the second is just a follow-up to Vice Mayor Bertone's mention of the listening tour on 9/16 at Paradise Valley Estates. Anybody that is interested in going there, PVE does have a mask mandate, so as you go on the property, be expected that the security will tell you that you're going to need to wear a mask. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
All right. And Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. And Madam Clerk?
I just have something really brief. I just want to talk about the current openings. We currently have Measure P Oversight Committee open, so we have two seats if anybody's interested in applying. The deadline is at 5:00 p.m. on September 29th. For the Landscape Oversight Committee, we still, we finally have pretty much almost every district except two, and I know Scott is trying to get, I think he got one person. You just, oh, you did? Oh, perfect. Okay. We filled somebody for District Two. That was, and then Youth Commission, I just want to remind everybody, we always have ongoing recruitment, so if anybody, you know, that's interested in joining Youth Commission, please submit your applications. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, we're going to go ahead and turn to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would. What's that? Oh, I guess I have a presentation before that. Sorry, I know you guys were all excited. I'm excited about this. All right. I'm going to go up and give this presentation. This is really special.
Yeah.
Let's have you all come up here, okay?
This is the recognition of Delanda D. Buchanan, presented by Mayor Catherine Moy.
We have a real guardian angel, a real angel. Now, we probably have a lot in the room. I think you're all angels, right? But we have a real angel here today, and she goes by Dee, but her name is Delanda. Is that correct? Delanda Buchanan. And Joe Joyce, who I've known since I was a kid here in Fairfield, contacted me, and he had had a horrible, horrible accident. And I'll just read what he said to me, because it tells the story, and I couldn't tell it better myself. He said, "I would like to nominate Dee Buchanan for recognition as a citizen hero for her lifesaving actions. On May 5th, 2023, Dee is my longtime neighbor and friend. Her family moved in within days of us in our brand-new subdivision here in Sanctuary Valley. Her kids and ours became friends and classmates. They were the first to attend Rollingwood Elementary when it opened. Over the past 15 years, we have shared a lot of experiences, helped each other when needed, looked after the kids, put out the garbage when the others were on vacation, et cetera. But on May 5th, I was working on my classic car in the garage, alone, without anyone at my home, when suddenly the car lunged forward, pinned me against the wall, breaking my pelvis and back. I yelled for help for several minutes. I was in very critical condition at that point. I was yelling for help, but I was fading. Dee somehow heard me yell for help and came from across the street. Unlike most these days, she shot out and came towards them. She came toward the screaming instead of running the other way or ignoring it. And she was scared and unsure by what she saw. And then I asked her to get into the car and reverse it, and it freed me from the wall. She called 911 and stayed with me until help arrived. I know I would not have lasted much longer pinned to that wall, and I am blessed that she was there that day to have answered my call. Dee is truly my hero, and I would love to see her honored for her selfless actions. Could you do that for me, please?" Well, of course, I can. So, I want to honor you, Dee. This is for your swift and selfless actions and lifesaving heroics to come to the aid of a friend and a neighbor in a very severe emergency. Thank you very much.
I won the Tomato and Vine Festival, too, with that car.
With his car.
Fairfield Fire Department, medic ambulance, Dee. I'm up, and I'm a testimony to North Bay, their trauma center. I shouldn't even be up and walking in half the time. The community has supported me, you know, although, don't try and get PT, right? I still haven't got a PT appointment. Sorry, but the love of the community, everybody out there, the fire department, the paramedics, they've just been fantastic. Tomorrow morning, 6:30, I'm at UCSF for my final surgery to attach my bladder. My wife says I can't say where it's getting back attached to, but I love the community. We're out there every day. Please, Ball Metal Saturday, I will be out there. Support them. It's back-to-school drive. I know the mayor's going to be out there. I hope that the council can come out. We love you all. Thank you. And Dee, I still owe her dead fish, too.
You want to step up here and say something? You don't have to, but we like to hear from angels, too.
Well, first and foremost, I want to say I really appreciate this. I really do. I appreciate this, and I wasn't expecting it, of course, and as Joe said, I was terribly nervous, could not figure out if I was going in reverse or drive, and one wrong move would make a huge difference. So, I was panicked, and I do appreciate Jill's calmness, even during that time, to tell me how to back it out. So, I thank God for being there, and I know that if the tables were turned, he would certainly do the same for me and my family. So, thank you, guys, all, and I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. It's good meeting you. God bless you. Take care. God bless you tomorrow. See you this weekend. We have amazing people in this town. You never know, even if you don't have to drive a stick shift. He's pinned against the wall, and he tells you how to do it. It's amazing. So, now, we're going to turn to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would?
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place a matter on a future agenda. Please speak on an agenda item. Please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item.
Okay. I am going to limit speaking to two minutes, and you cannot share your time with anybody else. So, I'd like to see a hand, everybody's hand who's here for the P, to talk about PFowl. Okay? And how many are, oppose what we did up here? Okay? And then, we have how many who, how many who support the unanimous vote that we made? Okay. So, we're going to go ahead, and it's, again, it's two minutes, and go ahead.
Our first speaker is Skip Thompson, followed by Jeff Trager.
I'm a politician, so I may be pressed for two minutes, but I'll try as best I can. Councilmembers, Mayor, first, I want to thank the mayor for her leadership on the Flannery issue. I mean, I'm here thinking that three years ago, I retired and I was done with politics. When I see something like Flannery Associates coming into our county, and they want to give us the old, we're here to help. And so, I've written some comments, and I'll read them as quickly as I can, Mayor. When I was on the board, we started inquiring with Flannery Associates as to why they were buying up all the different land. Their response was, we're doing planning, retirement planning. But it seemed quite odd that you would do retirement planning when you're spending more than the asset you're buying is worth. And so, now that the company has been revealed, all of a sudden, they want to be helpful. They want to, and I have to put my glasses on to read this. They say they've been quiet in their activities because they didn't want to invoke a rush on land value speculation. And so, that brought me to a Solano County Water Agency meeting. I was on a subcommittee. We're looking for an intake, for our SQUA intake, and we had had appraised on some land and came up with $8,500 an acre, what we thought we had purchased, land, when all of a sudden, Flannery Associates shows up, and they pay $3,000 or $4,000 more. So, obviously, we lost that. But that was kind of their first purchase in Solano County.
You've got 20 seconds.
And, you know, they're now saying they're not limited to, by confidentiality, and they want to begin a conversation about the future of Solano County, but yet, they never asked any of us, who lived here for 40 or 50 years, what we thought about Solano County. I went to their website, picture of horses in a pasture, and in the background is Travis Air Force Base with an airplane on the tarmac. They talk about the utopian green city space, affordable housing, walkable neighborhoods, open space, clean environment, and good-paying jobs. You know, we've all been in campaigns, and this sounds like a slick campaign being unfolded right before our eyes. And of course, they're going to protect Travis Air Force Base. They've already assured us this. Flannery Associates stated they're in a stealth mode when acquiring the land, as I said, to avoid...
Skip, your time's up.
Time's up. Well...
You can leave those comments with us if you want. We'll put them in the record.
I will do that. I'm sorry...
That'd be great.
Pardon me?
That would be great.
Okay. I should have got to the bottom line, which is, the billionaire ballot measure, we're going to have to oppose it, and it's going to take a campaign on our part to get there.
Let's do it then, Skip.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff Trager, followed by Harry Matt.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, very quickly, at the Downtown Theater this month, we have the Secret Garden on September 16th, followed by the Rocky Horror Show in And then, on the October 4th, we have Papino d'Agostino, the world-famous... weeks ago, we went to Ridgeview, and we went to Dover. And every week, it seemed to get bigger, sometimes weather would cause problems. But the last show I went to, somebody came up to me and says, "Man, I've been to every one of your shows." And I says, "It's great what the city is doing." So, I thank David Gassaway and all your people that really helped. And again, the parking rec department, I mean, they do a great job, those beautiful parks, and I'm sure there's more out there, but that's what I've got. Very quickly, October 16th, we can't forget, Matt Garcia, we're gonna do a big event there, September, September 16th.
15 seconds.
That's it for me, and I'm sure, I think Ray Kormach is going to be putting out some flyers, so you'll be hearing more about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Our next speaker is Harry Matt, followed by Ron Colty.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Harry Matty, and it's my privilege to represent one of the most worthwhile, longest-lived community-minded organizations in the city, and one of the least well-known. We're gonna change that. The organization is the All Volunteer Friends of the Fairfield Senior Center, founded in 1983, and bringing together more people each week than does any other club, group, or organization at the adult recreation center, and we've been doing it for 40 years. Average attendance at the Friends Friday Night Bingo is 94 persons. Consider that for a moment, 94 people coming to the unassuming building at 1200 Harry Price Drive each and every Friday to enjoy each other's company, a weekend outing for many, a break from stifling isolation from many others. Many bring younger family members, any person under 18 years of age can play. That's half our story. The other half is that the Friends Bingo, while the most affordable in Solano County, is the Friends' major fundraiser. And what do we do with our profits? In compliance with our 501(c)(3) law, bylaws, we fund projects and programs at the ARC and any of our clubs seeking financial help for a worthwhile project. Examples abound. We helped design and fund the ARC's computer room, bought computer-guided saws for the wood shop, upgraded the kitchen, purchased audio and video equipment for the garden club. In short, council members, the Friends help make the ARC the useful, welcome sanctuary that we all wish it to be, and we do it with our own sweat, equity, and money we raise.
You have 20 seconds.
We're most proud of that. We've never asked the city or Fairfield taxpayers for a penny. Tonight begins our Autumn Drive for more players and volunteers. Working closely with the city's excellent ARC management team, we want to broaden our customer base and improve our expense-to-income ratios. So, please, council members, help us get the word out, and drop in any Friday evening to see for yourself what too many Fairfield folks have been missing. Thank you, and Godspeed with your work for Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all of that time.
Our next speaker is Ron Colty, followed by June Johnson.
Madam Mayor, I was gonna ask a question, and maybe you could help me, because I don't know if it's true or not, and it has to do with the peacocks. When Rolling Hills, before it was Rolling Hills, was farmland and pasture land, and it's my understanding that when the city took over that property, that there were arrangements put in place to protect the peacocks and provide for them. Is that true?
For 25 peacocks, yes. 25 to keep on the property. That's correct.
You know, speaking, I noticed, I drove through, I live on the Fieldcrest side, which is the north side. We don't really have a bird problem over there. We enjoy the birds over there. But yesterday, I did drive through the south side of Hillborne, and they have a lot more birds over there than we have, and it seems to me that they were kind of concentrated in a couple of areas. I don't know what attracts them to that particular area, but they're kind of like an ambassador for our little neighborhood that we have over there. I've been there 25 years, and, you know, we look forward to seeing them all the time. Grandkids look forward to seeing them, people come around to see them. The other thing that they do is, I've noticed, you know, when the peacocks are out on the road, people slow down. It keeps the flow of traffic slower in our neighborhood. That helps us a lot. They make a little bit of a mess once in a while, but it's, you know, it's a small price to pay. Something, I know, some of the literature that I received, they were talking about ways to maybe control them. And I grew up on a big ranch, and we had peacocks and guinea hens, and the way we controlled them is, you know, during breeding season, we would just go around and pick up the eggs. You know, we'd leave a certain percentage of them so we could keep them going, but it seemed to work out pretty well to do it that way. So, anyway, I'm in favor for leaving the birds alone and finding a way to control them, and in those areas where they seem to be concentrated, there was one yard I saw yesterday, must've had 40 birds in it, and I don't know what it is that draws them to that particular yard.
Probably being fed.
Well, it could be, too. I'm not gonna say that we don't do it, too. I think a lot of people do.
Yeah, they do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is June Johnson, followed by Renee Allen.
Well, hello, neighbor. I live on Fieldcrest as well. Actually, there are plenty of peacocks. I have several pictures in my phone. I walk every morning, I see them every morning. I just ask and plead with you to continue with reducing the population. We, too, love our peacocks. We just want to see the population reduced to a manageable size. The numbers are 80 to 100. I don't know what the number is, but I appreciate that the council is considering reducing the size to 25 to 30. And I ask many of my neighbors that are here tonight, I hope that we can leave tonight and be exactly what you spoke about. Hold on, because I wrote it down, and it really hit me. I hope we can come away tonight and be longtime neighbors and friends to each other, regardless of how we feel about our PFowl. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I want to tell everybody here that there is not an agenda item tonight, of course, on this, is why you're speaking now. This body already made, and we made a decision, and it was unanimous, and we heard both sides. No, we're not gonna talk out if you are gonna leave, okay? So, please, just take your time up here at the mic. Thank you. We did hear both sides. We heard people who are for them, people who are not, and there are a lot of reasons why we decided to call, and what we mean is, capture the peacocks, and then, or PFowl, peacocks and peahens, and they're going to farms where they're going to live for the rest of their lives, which could be 20 years, 15 years, whatever. And we're gonna keep 25 on the area, the park, where it was intended to be, and that's where people can go feed them, see them, and feed them what's proper. And then we won't have, I know some people say that there has not been any damage, but we've seen the pictures, we had people come up and talk about it. So, you know, we want an understanding, we want to be good neighbors and friends, too, but we were unanimous here. Councilman, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to, I want to say that I reacted before I researched on that, on the PFowl issue, and it's something that I'd certainly like to take a deeper look into. I've been listening to pros and cons about the peacocks, and my opinion's changed. I think that I need to do more research, and that's where I stand. So, if we, if we... So, if we passed that ordinance, and did we, I guess I'm asking David, did we pass an ordinance?
It was not an ordinance, it was just, no.
Yes.
No, we just, we just voted unanimously to do it, to have them captured and moved, and then 25 there. That's what we had decided at the time. But of course, if a majority wants to put it back up, we can. So, I just wanted to make it clear that we had, we also have had listening tours, and in your area, we did. Nobody talked about the PFowl there. So, I just want to bring those things up. I've done a lot of research as well, and I know you all have, too, because you're all vested in this, and I understand, because there are beautiful birds. So, I just wanted to say that, that we don't have anything in front of us today. We're glad to listen to you, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Renee Allen, followed by Kirsten DeHardy. Renee Allen?
Hi. My first city council meeting, Madam Mayor and council members, and as you can tell, I'm here for the peacocks. I live in the Flower District, my mother has lived there for years, and it's just such a pleasure, and a lot of the neighbors seem to enjoy them. And one thing, which is not good for the peacocks, but good for people in the area, is they slow the traffic down. People use Marigold, Atlantic, and Orchid Streets as a freeway, and I've seen people drive up to 50 miles an hour passing, and the peacocks are wonderful at slowing people down, because it's pretty scary out there. And that's one thing I would let you guys to be able to address, is the safety in the neighborhood, because the speeding is out of control. It really is. And as somebody who walks every morning and every evening with their dog, it's pretty scary, and people don't necessarily stop if you're in the middle of the street. They'll go around you, so...
It is definitely something. I think I'll have somebody from the police department talk to you about that, and really, we have not used PFowl before for traffic.
But, you know, it's great.
I don't know, maybe something Scott's looking into, but yeah, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kirsten DeHardy, followed by Heidi DeHardy.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten DeHardy, and I'm speaking on behalf of the PFowl as well. As I mentioned at the city council meeting in July, I was born and raised in Rolling Hills, so I grew up with the unique presence of the PFowl. I recently bought my own house in the same neighborhood, and a reason I chose to do so was because I wanted to continue to live among the PFowl. I've been so lucky to experience the impact they have on our community. I know this issue is a very sensitive one, and there are people who are for and against sharing their thoughts and opinions on social media and in person here tonight. I want it to be known that I love the PFowl. They contribute to the special identity of our neighborhood. It is crucial to highlight that the PFowl have happily coexisted with us for generations, and they have never caused any significant concerns or disruptions. I am aware that those who do not like the PFowl state that they make noise and create a mess in yards. However, there are potential solutions that can be implemented to deter the PFowl from such neighbors' yards. I am hoping that these solutions can be discussed at the next PFowl meeting, when it is scheduled within our neighborhood. I am also aware that a compromise needs to be agreed upon by all neighbors in our community so that all voices are heard. This includes coming together and determining what the proper quantity of PFowl is. I do not believe a herd of only 25 birds is appropriate. That number is too small, in my opinion. Again, I hope this can be discussed further at upcoming PFowl meetings, so that a mutual agreement can be reached. I want to stress the importance of acknowledging the widespread support for the PFowl within our community. There are many residents who love these birds and value their presence. It is my hope that the voices of those who deeply appreciate the PFowl will be taken into consideration as decisions regarding their future continue to be made. In conclusion, I kindly urge you to recognize the love and connection many residents in our neighborhood have on the PFowl. They represent a distinctive aspect of our environment that contributes positively to our lives, for example, lowering the number of rattlesnake encounters. Thank you for your time and consideration. Your efforts in preserving the unique character of our neighborhood are greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heidi, followed by Laura Vera.
Good evening. My name is Heidi DeHardy. I had a list or a speech written out, but seeing as it appears that the decision has already been made, there's really little point in reading that, but I think something, the beginning part, I think, is important. At the July council meeting, it was our understanding that the Rolling Hills residents were made aware of the meeting as it was an issue that directly affected our neighborhood. But once we came to the city council meeting and became apparent that this was not the case, believing that the importance of transparency, a few members of the PFowl committee, along with a few Rolling Hills residents, drafted a neutral letter addressing the points of interest and findings from that city council meeting. We printed 1,300 letters and walked door-to-door delivering the letters to ensure that every resident was made aware of the current developments. When we had asked the board why they weren't, why this didn't get out to all the residents, even though a few of the board members had spoke, they said it wasn't the responsibility of the board to let us know, it was the responsibility of the individual neighbors to reach out and sign up for the city council's website, to know when agendas or issues were being put on the agenda that directly affected our neighborhood, which, to many of us, was very confusing, if not the purpose of the board to tell us what's going on in our neighborhood, what is the purpose of our board? You had mentioned why it was never brought up at the peacock meeting when you came, or the peacocks weren't brought up. It's because none of us neighbors knew that there was even an issue at that time. Had we known that there was an issue that the board members, a few of them, were bringing this on, we would've spoke up about it. The same people that are here speaking up now would've spoke even louder then. So, we're kind of doing the back work of something that should've never happened in the first place. To hear you say that you've heard different peoples and both sides is really, really unfair, because we believe that it's been very, very one-sided, and we would just ask that we have the same opportunity to share our thoughts about the peacocks as others, and we respectfully know there's gonna be, there's gonna be different sides to every point, there's gonna be both extremes. And we also ask that we have the peacock committee that's been formed for the safety of the peacocks, their welfare. We ask that, you know, you allow that to come back, to be, you know, to strengthen again. It's kind of fell by the wayside before COVID, but we were up and going strong for that, working with UC Davis, working with the Oakley Center for Birds, trying to get information about, you know, what do you do with the eggs? You don't take the eggs away.
Your time is up. We're here, you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Vera, followed by Alex Pa...
Laura's not here yet, but I'll go.
Oh, yeah, Alex, okay. I'll bring her back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Paite. Mine was also timed to exactly three minutes, so I'm gonna go rogue right now. So, I am a homeowner in Rolling Hills. I love the PFowl. I've lived there for three years now, but my in-laws have been there for 25 years. We've always been amongst the peacocks. We have never had an issue. So, to your point on the Heart-to-Heart Tour, I was there. We never brought it up because we did not know it was an issue. There were two people in the crowd who do try to represent our neighborhood as a whole that did know that it was an issue that they were gonna bring up at the city council meeting, that it was on the agenda. They did not tell us all as a whole in our neighborhood network. We do not have an HOA, so I just want to make that very clear, that they do not speak on our behalf. When we have asked them to put out illustrations in the newsletters that we have emailed out regarding the PFowl, they have decided not to do so and said that it would cause too much of a ruckus. So, I do want to make it very clear that the majority of us do love the PFowl that we live among. We don't have an issue with them. I would love to see, I've actually done a lot of research, I'm in real estate, looking up the different provisions, trying to figure out where we're getting this 25 PFowl number. I would love to see that. If you have something that shows that, I would love to read that. We have a lot of people that actually, I did go door-to-door and help hand out those letters, that said that they used to actually visit the ranch, and they were friends with the owner, and they don't know anything about that, and I'm hoping that they'll get up and speak tonight. My other point that I do want to say is that we appreciate your help. We know that this land was given with provisions to take care of these PFowl, so instead of just coming to us and helping us with trapping, we would love help with helping us to feed them, to care for them. If you guys have better solutions, we do have a PFowl committee, please come and join us at our next meeting. We came here first so that we can show you guys our support for these animals, but we would appreciate your help in that sense, not just having the landscape division trap these animals. And furthermore, they shouldn't be trapped where they're supposed to be a safe haven. So, if we want them all to stay there at Dunell Park, they can't be trapped there, because you're scaring them, they're getting hurt, they're walking around. We have pictures of them with broken... do want to make it very clear that the majority of us do love the PFAL that we live among. We don't have an issue with them. I would love to see, I've actually done a lot of research, I'm in real estate, looking up the different provisions, trying to figure out where we're getting this 25 PFAL number. I would love to see that. If you have something that shows that, I would love to read that. We have a lot of people that actually, I did go door to door and help hand out those letters, that said that they used to actually visit the ranch and they were friends with the owner, and they don't know anything about that, and I'm hoping that they'll get up and speak tonight. My other point that I do want to say is that we appreciate your help. We know that this land was given with provisions to take care of these PFAL, so instead of just coming to us and helping us with trapping, we would love help with helping us to feed them, to care for them. If you guys have better solutions, we do have a PFAL committee, please come and join us at our next meeting. We came here first so that we can show you guys our support for these animals, but we would appreciate your help in that sense, not just having the landscape division trap these animals. And furthermore, they shouldn't be trapped where they're supposed to be, a safe haven. So if we want them all to stay there at Dunell Park, they can't be trapped there, because you're scaring them. They're getting hurt. They're walking around. We have pictures of them with broken feet. They have to feel that that's a safe place to be. So we need to stop feeding them elsewhere, feed them just there and keep them safe there. And we would love you guys to come to our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Alex, when is that next meeting?
Whenever you say it, I can have it. I just wanted to make sure that everybody is here tonight.
Our next speaker is Lynn Davis, followed by John Takahuchi.
Good evening. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the PFAL in the Rolling Hills neighborhood, and for those that also love these beautiful birds. It seems as though we have only heard from the people that do not like the PFAL. I just want to say that I chose to move to Rolling Hills because of the free-roaming PFAL. My husband and I spent so many weekends driving around looking for a neighborhood to relocate to. As soon as I saw the free-roaming peacocks, I knew this was the neighborhood for me. My husband and I looked at approximately five homes in the Rolling Hills area before we chose our current residence. We have been here close to 10 years, and we absolutely love the PFAL. We love sitting in our yard, watching and listening to the PFAL. It brings us a lot of pleasure and joy. My grandchildren get excited when they come to visit. They too love watching the PFAL. Not only are the PFAL beautiful, but they also keep away pests such as rats, mice, snakes, bugs, et cetera. People are fully aware of the free-roaming PFAL prior to purchasing their home in the area. My question to the individuals that want the PFAL removed is, why on earth would you purchase a home somewhere that you know something you found to be a nuisance? These birds, these beautiful birds have lived in this area since the early 1950s. The PFAL were here long before any homes were built. Now they should be removed from their environment to appease you? You could have moved to any number of locations, but chose to buy here, and now you want to remove the beautiful birds because they annoy you? What about the people that moved here because of the PFAL? Do we not count? We not only knew what we were getting into, but we chose it. My husband and I are motorcycle enthusiasts. I can't begin to tell you how many times, while out, we have met people, and as soon as we tell them where they live, they give a big smile on their face and share stories of growing up in the neighborhood, or of a parent or grandparent bringing them to see the PFAL. As I said earlier, the PFAL were here long before the homes were built. Why should they be forced to move? Why should these, those that love the PFAL be forced to roll over to the few haters?
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Takahuchi, followed by Beverly Edmonds.
This is a change of pace here. I'll throw my three-minute script out here and get right to the quick. I went to the Measure P committee meeting two weeks ago. I go there just to find out what's going on with the city. The committee can do nothing about Measure P. It's general fund money. They have no control or whatever. But I went there because I got a copy of the 2023-24 budget, and it shows 20, almost $20 million for streets. And I was real pleased, because I reminded the group or the committee about when, when George Hicks retired, some of you may remember, he said it's going to take $13 million per year, 13 per year, to maintain, to bring them up to speed and keep them there. The city has never met that. Okay? So anyway, I was kind of pleased to see 20 million. And then I looked at it more closely. The 20 million is only four projects totaling $8 million are for streets. The rest of it goes for painting the train station parking lot and striping and things like that. Okay? That's not going to hack it. Some of these streets are in terrible shape. Yeah, I come, I come here on Travis Boulevard from IAD right to Webster. It's awful, you know, and that's a main thoroughfare. So you got to do something. You all know zero-based budgeting, right? You take the things you have to do, things you want to do, with the cost of each, and you put them on a list, and you start subtracting expected revenue. When there's $0 left, you stop. That's it. Okay? Now, the, John Furtado also mentioned that when they were putting the budget together back in January, or whatever it was, he said the staff
You have 10 seconds.
far exceeded expected revenues. Can I get about 10 seconds, Mayor?
You've got 10 seconds. Whoop, you better
Okay, anyway, he said it far exceeded it, and, and they did a juggling act. If you don't want to do that juggling act every year, you have to cut spending. That's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Beverly Edmonds, followed by Victor Etul. Sorry, I can't properly pronounce Etul. Oh, okay. Oh, they're both Edmonds, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I know that all of you received a letter from the SPCA of LA in regard to how to manage our, our PFAL, and I would like to read that, because I think it could be the basis for a compromise between the two areas, and so I'd like for the people here to hear it. Dear council members, PFAL are beautiful, regal, sentient beings who live in social groups and in family packs. They are part of California's wildlife landscape and ecosystems, and have an intrinsic right to live in their natural or adopted habitats without interference from humans, especially if the primary reason is mere annoyance. The fact that some residents do not share an affection for these creatures should not result in their very stressful and possible inhumane removal. Trapping and relocating them can be cruel if traps are not properly monitored. Social groups and families are fractured, and efforts to find their way home after relocation meet with disorientation, injury, and illness. Ecosystems, both in the old and new locations, may be disrupted, causing unwelcome species proliferation, such as snakes, diseases, and adaptation issues. SPCA LA recommends a more enlightened and respectful approach, which includes education, water deterrence, visual deterrence, food deterrence, fauna deterrence, and otherwise designing a garden area that can be both more inviting or unwelcoming, depending upon the goal.
Your time is up. You can leave that here, and we'll put it in the record.
You all should have a copy.
Yeah, we do, but I think for the public record, so they can see it.
Okay.
And we, they can use the one that we have, but thank, thank you. We'll put it in the record. It was interesting. Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is Victor, followed by Thea Hansen.
Hi, I'm Victor Edmonds, and I want to say, say some things in favor of the peacocks, but really in favor of us too. I, I, the morning after I saw the last city council meeting, July 18th, I went outside, and for some reason, that was the first time I really noticed it. It was perfectly silent. And when we, when we chose to live in Rolling Hills, I'll never forget when we first rolled into it, because we rolled in there and the kids were all laughing and, and, and having a great time in the park, and the peacocks were chattering to one another. And, and as we soon found out, the neighbors are very welcoming and talking. It seemed like a really harmonious place where, where nature and various ages and various people of various backgrounds were all really in harmony. And I think that's what really got us to love Rolling Hills as much as we do, and Fairfield as much as we do. That was about two years ago. When I, I listened to the, the tape of that July 18th meeting twice, and I thought, man, there's nobody really talking about the peacocks. They're talking about, well, the peacock scratched my car, and things like that, or, and, and not the peacocks. And the peacocks really are very personable. In fact, the last April, when apparently there was the first pickup and, and demolition or whatever they did to them, but my favorite peacock, he and I are real buddies. I named him Gilmore because, Glenwood, pardon me, I named him Glenwood, because he seemed to be kind of in charge of the neighborhood. He sat there up where Cambridge hits, and he had a few friends there, and he would make sure things were in shape in the neighborhood. And if things were strange, he would let everybody know. He'd yell. And I thought, and I really missed him, you know, too. I think it kind of as a, as a pet, kind of, you know, but, but
Time is up?
Oh, no. Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thea Hansen, followed by, I probably pronounced this wrong, Collett.
Pretty good with the limbo there. That was good. Say it all in two minutes, but I'll try. Hi, I'm Thea Hansen. I'm head of the PFAL feeding program that the PFAL committee originally set up that was dissolved due to COVID. I just want to make aware, I, I have recently become aware that the city, when the city took possession of the Dunell Ranch property on May 24th of 1998, Adie Mae Demel, the owner of the Dunell Ranch, she sent an open letter to the city, to all the residents of Rolling Hill, and it was published in the Daily Republic. Okay? It was supposed to discuss how the city was to manage the PFAL and let everybody know, so it was public record. However, I can't find that letter, so I'm asking if you guys can help me find the letter, please. I'd also like to request that we reform the PFAL committee, because the city was a member of that. We had city representatives and residents, and we worked together, and I'm hoping that we can resolve some of these issues regarding the PFAL and educate residents. Okay? I'd also like to let everybody know that in 2004, the city adopted a PFAL management plan, and it included an aviary, but due to cost of aviary staffing and medic, veterinary care, they did away with the aviary. The aviary was supposed to have 20 to 25 birds, due to the size. Okay, that's where the low number comes from. Okay, so as 20 to 25 birds might be great for an aviary, it's not for free-roaming birds. I, I would like to see 75 to 80 birds. There's 350 acres of open space in the Rolling Hills. That's over three acres per bird. I'd also like you to keep in mind that when the city took possession of the PFAL, there were 50 birds on site. It's taken 25 years for this to become the current issue, the current issues we're experiencing. And then that has been with, with minimal abatement.
Your time is up. I'm going to ask city staff to look for that letter for you and to make it public. We should probably have something somewhere, because we did take custody of that property, so I would think that it might be there. Okay?
Okay, I have other facts in here, so hopefully it'll get
Could you leave that? Oh, you have it? Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Collett, followed by Laura Vera.
Well, good afternoon. I truly respect the opinion and the feeling of all members and neighbors who spoke about the peacock. As a resident, I walk. I believe in fact, actually unfortunately, with a lot of misleading information was provided to the people. That's why I invite the council member to the walk-walk. Go to the neighborhood and talk to the people, get the firsthand impression from the people. I love peacock. I'm going to tell you, whenever I have a family member, I take them to that place, to the Dunell House. However, recently now, we have overpopulation. So my question to anybody who would like to see them there, how many numbers would you like to see? 1,000? 1,500? That's my question. So I'm with the control and the management, and I don't see anybody is against them. Against them doesn't mean eradicating them. I haven't heard any neighbor told me that. A lot of people with the management. For people who are talking about the history, go back to 1950s, the Dunell House, how many peacocks they had back then? 200? I heard they received one peacock couple for, as a gift for their wedding. Now we have overpopulation. I have a lot of people that, you know, personally, they have noise issues. Disciples, I have an application for disciples. Go there by 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM during the mating season, Miss Cuscat, and then you can hear the problem. So I believe control is the best decision, and we need to rely on science, not just feeling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Vera. Is she here? Oh, there she is. Right through the door. There she is.
Hi.
You have two minutes.
Hi, what?
Two minutes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, city council members and staff for allowing me to speak this evening. On behalf of our peacock community, my name is Laura Vera. I've been a resident of Fairfield for 48 years, and a resident of the Rolling Hills community for the last 22 years. Our subdivision has always been unique. Rancho Solano and Paradise Valley are known for their golf courses. East Ridge is known for their gate, and Rolling Hills for their peacocks. Like them or not, you knew that what you were getting into when you bought your beautiful home in the peacock's natural habitat. I believe these birds bring beauty and wonder and different, it makes us different from every other community here in Fairfield. I was working in my yard last night and witnessed, you know, as I have several times before, a person, a gentleman stopped his car with a toddler in the back to roll down the window and go, look, there's a peacock. I actually drove, which I was a little late for a work thing that went on that was unexpected, but I drove the community today. I counted 39 peacocks, and I went to the peacock farm. And I spoke to the, the, the girls that were out there looking for feathers as they were leaving the, the peacock farm. I, I heard from somebody that last meeting, you said something about caging these animals. Please don't do that to these peacocks. They're beautiful. They are not harming anybody. If you don't like the noise, there's grande circle. You can hear some gunshots if you want to go off. Seriously, so
That's nasty. Please don't say that.
Well, I'm just saying that if it's a noise issue, there's noise issues everywhere. I drew, I grew up next to the freeway, and I heard cars passing by all the time. So there's a noise issue. I could complain about that, that somebody built right next to the, to the, to the highway, same thing. So that's all I have to say. Just, I, I just say, and I want to know how you guys are going to, how are you guys counting these numbers? And how are you going to decide whether there's 25 or 30 or 125? How are you deciding that?
Thank you.
You know, it's okay to have an opinion, but it's okay to have an opinion, but not to bring down another neighborhood. Yeah, that's not good at all.
Okay, so that's all the, are there any more public comments? That's all the cards I've got for tonight. I just thought I'd ask. Any, you like?
So my name is Mitch Slater. I'm a relatively new resident of the neighborhood. My daughter is a kindergartner at Rolling Hills, so we get to walk to school every day from our beautiful home on Field Crest. I just want to focus on what I think that some of the underlying emotional strain that you're hearing from the crew here has less to do with maybe the specifics of the decision that was made, or the, the consideration of this body, more with the communication within the Rolling Hills community. We are a very tightly knit community, which is, I think, a real strength. If there's a guinea pig lost at the park, we all hear about it. And so what I think took a lot of us by surprise was hearing that this meeting had happened and that there was no peep of it through the, all the various threads, text chains, email, that we usually use to be informed of what's going on. So it felt, at least to me, I'm going to speak just for myself personally, it felt, you know, that some people that had a very clear agenda were intentionally keeping it on the down-low, so to speak, so that they could have maybe a disproportional voice at the last meeting. And the folks that are showing up here tonight, I think, are trying to rectify that and make sure that there's a proportionality to the opinions that you hear that more reflects what's actually happening in the neighborhood. I understand there are a few people that feel very strongly and have valid opinions, and and have valid opinions. And I was a biology major, I understand population control. And I think there's, there's a lot of room for compromise and solution if the whole group, as we're talking about, can get together and make those decisions and maybe take some more responsibility for cleaning up after these animals. Because it is gross to walk with my daughter to school and have to step over the piles. And I think we would do that work if we had the opportunity. But I just wanted to kind of, it doesn't reflect at all in this chamber, but that's some of the feelings are more what happened or didn't happen leading up to that meeting in terms of us being aware as a community of what was going on.
Thank you so much, Mitch. Could you fill out a card, please, Mitch?
Just right here.
Thank you.
Is there, oh, please come up. There's another speaker. And can you fill the public comment card afterwards? Thank you.
My name's, my name's Scott Hick, and I've lived in the neighborhood, Rolling Hills, before the peacocks were an issue. I moved in 33 years ago, and there were a dozen or less birds at the time. And Mrs. Donnell maintained them very well. We'd see her stomping nests and managing the birds. And they were never an issue. It was a quaint thing, across and a long ways away, all on her ranch property. Once the ranch property was cleared of some of the trees, and of course, populations expand and expand and expand, and it cannot carry on. If there were any other animal, or there were any other noise at the volume that we get, it would have been addressed previously. But I would just have to say that, you know, they are beautiful birds. They're wonderful to have, but they've gotten to a nuisance level where I've seen, I helped a neighbor move out in that area, and he had $4,000 or $5,000 worth of roof damage from the birds knocking tiles off his roof. And of course, when you feed peacocks, you feed rats. And he had a severe rat infestation. And they're being fed pre-regularly. There's no ordinance about feeding that I know of, whereas you see in the literature, the Rancho Palos Verdes did have to pass an ordinance about feeding and about molesting the traps that are being set for them, and releasing birds and things like that. So there's a lot to consider, and I applaud you for your bravery in taking this action because it's a very emotional thing. Because they're beautiful birds, and everybody loves to see the birds. But those who live closest, I feel sorry for them. But now it's, they're on my roof all the time and in my yard. And I've seen as many as, like the one guy commented, who loves them, 50 in a person's yard at a time. I think there's a far greater number than we actually know. I'd bet over 500 in the area. I've seen 30 or 40 in that one court over there any day of the week. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My husband is a roofer, and he said that the birds, not just PFAL, but birds cause a lot of roof leaks from doing their duty up there. And so it is a real problem. It's a serious problem.
The turkeys, snakes, and cats, not the peacocks. We don't see quail anymore in the neighborhood, and a lot of the fauna has changed.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I did not know how to sign up to speak, so.
So, I spent 30 years serving our country, and I lived in 20 different homes, moved 20 times. And so when I looked for a place to live, I actually chose Fairfield because of the PFAL. That was one of the main reasons. Kind of helped the anxiety. I love listening to them. The screaming does not bother me. I understand it bothers some people, but not me. I actually find it relaxing. So it's a little bit like buying a home and buying it with a pool, and then having the city come and fill the pool full of sand. You're not really getting what you thought if you're removing them. I personally have not seen a PFAL of any kind for a couple of weeks in my neighborhood. I don't know if you're trapping them now, but they seem to be dissipating a little bit. I was part of the Rolling Hills Board. I had no idea about the last meeting you guys had. I didn't even know it was an issue. So I suspect a lot of people in the neighborhood did not know that as well. I actually resigned from the board over this issue. I call those members my friends still, but I disagree on this issue completely. Had I known, I would have been here. Some of us are also working, I've talked to, oh, nine neighbors. Out of those nine, every single one of them are upset about the fact that the PFAL are being removed or going to be removed. So I suspect if you asked the neighborhood and took a vote, I think that the overwhelming majority would be in favor of the PFAL. So, my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Oh, I, you're welcome.
Yes. Anybody else? Come on up if you.
Austin, can we give him one more minute?
No. I'm sorry. Yeah. Just, just the two minutes. I'm sorry. And I'll have you fill out a card after you're done speaking, please, sir?
Yeah. I just want to reiterate the fact that Rolling Hills, that we have no official network that represents us. I know you said you did the walking tour in Rolling Hills, and that was organized through that organization. They're the ones who notified.
It wasn't.
I live in the neighborhood, and they're the ones who notified us of it. Yes, they are.
No, we, we, the city council was the one who put that together.
He found out from it through that network.
Okay, sir, but I'm just telling you, they did not put it together.
I just want to point that out. And I just want to point out the fact that if you're not willing to reconsider the decision based on the clear majority here of people who are, yeah, I just want to know what really is your skin in the game on this? Why do you have such a strong opinion on the opposing side?
I don't.
Because I see, I see that you've had personal relationships with some of the people on the opposing side. So why is the, yeah, her who's just said, oh my God, her. So what is the, why, how come everybody who's up here for it?
Sir, I'm here to listen to your opinion. Thank you.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying, and everybody who's been for it, you've been very short and rude with, you've made rude comments to council member Tonison about it, but everybody who's been for it, you've been very nice and polite to. So you clearly have a strong position on the opposing side, and that's not fair. That's very discouraging to the community.
Well, that's your opinion.
When our air can't even be impartial and get past our personal relationships.
Are you done?
No, I have 22 seconds.
Yeah, you have. Go ahead.
You were doing a lot of talking. I was asking, I asked you, what, is it gonna be reconsidered, or are the personal relationships gonna outweigh the needs of the community? Yep, that's what I expected. Stay on Facebook.
But see, this is starting our mayor, Jeremy.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, if you have a personal relationship, I don't have a personal relationship.
Sir, if you've had your time here, and Jeremy, please.
If he hasn't.
No. No, let's not talk out like this in the audience, please. Please. Yes, sir?
Thank you very much. First time I've ever done this before.
Thank you.
I am a homeowner on Fieldcrest Court. Been two years since Halloween. One of the things that sold, you know, like people have said, I'm sure I'm gonna say something you guys have already heard, but I want to make one comparison to San Francisco. I'm from San Francisco, so I know noise. Coming to Rolling Hills, it's so quiet. Yes, the peacocks can get real loud. It's like Jurassic Park, for sure. But it doesn't happen that often. Because I work from home. I go in the office like two, three times a month in San Mateo. But it's mostly quiet. I mean, it's beautiful. It's great. And the, you know, the comparison I'd like to make to you, please, is that I'm also a musician. I'm a accountant, a musician also. And I used to play clubs in South Market in, you know, San Francisco. And when soma became real hot, everybody wanted to live there, you know, around the bands and stuff, you know, slims and anyways. But then they discovered how loud it can be. And they changed the culture. And it kind of ruins soma, you know. So all my, just please consider that, you know, I'm sure you have, but it's the culture of Rolling Hills. Yeah, you know, I have a bladder on top of my roof or my pool. I'm worried that, you know, the peacocks are gonna puncture it, you know, and I have like tiles and everything. But I fix it. I'm willing to take that, that responsibility. And even before I came here, I sprayed peacock poop off my sidewalk because I have a big tree in the front where they sleep. So, you know, I respect that. It can be very loud. I know that. But I work from home, and it's only a few times a year. And I think it's, you know, it's got a lot of culture. So please consider that.
Thank you very much. Could you fill out a card, please? Is there anybody else?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to this very important topic. I wish we had been informed, I live in Rolling Hills as well, I wish we had been informed about this. Because I think a lot of us are scientific and researchers, and in addition to how we feel, we, you know, I like to make informed decisions. We live where a bunch of the peacocks sleep at night. They peep through our windows. They make friends with our cats. It's definitely part of our culture. And it's part of our culture that we, we love, we identify with. I think it does bring people together. We've had conversations with neighbors that we had never met before. It opens friendships. Maybe we're complaining about them, maybe we're saying wonderful things about them, but it's part of our culture. So I think really to take something out of anything's culture that is really established, it's just, it's just wrong. So I hope that we can have a conversation together about what we can do to make it a more manageable crowd, so that everyone can be in harmony.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else who hasn't spoken? Okay, I think there are a couple people online.
I do have two hands raised online. Valerie, can you let the first person in?
We have Manu Singh. You have two minutes.
Hi, can you help me, please?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a resident of Rolling Hills on Hillridge Drive, and my backyard and Donnell Park share the same fence. I came to know about the meeting that happened on July 18th afterwards, and went through the online recording of that meeting. I have my sincere sympathy with people who have been disturbed by the PFAL one way or the other. But in my sincere opinion, the fact is that majority of the neighborhood loves the PFAL and want them to stay in the area. Donnell Park brings beauty to the area, but what makes this park distinguished is the PFAL. Look at the online reviews for the park, and almost everyone is talking about these beautiful birds and how much they love to visit them here. These peacocks are amongst us for a very long time. They're great for pest control, as you have heard. And these birds are referred to as invasive and wild, but in actuality, they are very friendly. They have created a special bond with us. They roam around us fearless and believe in us. Much of the time, you will find them just resting peacefully in the park and around. Peacocks are, of course, known to make many sounds, many type of sounds, and only a handful of them are screams. They scream when they feel disturbed or if it's in their mating season. People have houses with loud traffic constantly running behind at their backyards. People are buying houses in busy places where they have airplanes and train tracks passing by them all the time. From my understanding, when we all signed the contract to buy our houses, we all acknowledge the fact that PFAL are a part of this neighborhood. City also has acknowledged the fact by posting the signs on the street, watch for PFAL. And then there are many people.
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry, can you state your name? I just didn't catch it for the public record.
First name is Manu, M-A-N-U. Last name is Singh, S-I-N-G-E. Thank you.
All right. Oh, I thought I had another hand, but I just had another person turn another card. Our next speaker is Dennis Green.
Hello. I just heard over, made me drive down here, and it's been a busy day for me as I'm dealing with cities things. Council, y'all can't be allowed on that like that. Them comments like that and just how y'all don't let, I'm saying that, y'all talking about culture. Grande Circle's where my culture and people like myself have to stay. We can't, we get treated less than peacocks around this thing. Treated like animals in this city. So when you speak on places like that, you should get somebody with more culture to speak on it. Or at least help us speak for us, because there ain't too many people speaking for us in the community. Like, we gotta take the crumbs, the peacock crumbs around this thing. I would like you to speak more when somebody says some comments like that. And that's all I have to say right now on that subject.
Thank you, sir. I agree with you. And two of us spoke out. Two of us spoke against that. We don't need to talk about other neighborhoods. That's no way to comport yourself. Anybody else?
I have no hands raised online.
All right.
No more cards.
All right. So is that it for public comment, then?
For general public comment, yes.
Public comment, okay. Then we're gonna go ahead for the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action to be taken on a specific item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that Councilman Tonison had something to say.
So, as I, as I stated earlier, I reacted before I researched. If I could just ask everyone to take a deep breath. You know, this is a lot. There's a lot of people for, there's a lot of people against. We can't, there are things we can do. Can I make comments, Mr. City Attorney, on questions that I have about that? Or would it, would it, we have to agendize something like that?
I would advise against it. We did not agendize this item, so I don't think it's appropriate for the legislative body at this time to make any comments for or against the item. Certainly, we can, the council has the authority to re-agendize it if that's their desire to have a discussion. But at this point, there's nothing agendized on the matter, and so I would advise against expressing an opinion about it.
I would like to do some more research on it. If the temperature of the council, if anybody wants to agendize it or second me agendizing it, I think we should talk more about it. I know it's a lot of work. I know there's a lot of, a lot of feelings in this room right now. People are, people's emotions are high. I get that.
Councilman Tonison, I'm gonna go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
We shouldn't now, I guess?
You have my advice, so.
Well, I'm, I just want to say that there's a lot of room for compromise, and we need to talk about that. Because we all live in the community, and we want to be good neighbors to each other. We have to live with each other, no matter what. So I believe that, at least as an attorney, any meaningful negotiation or mediation or compromise means that both sides don't get everything they want. But they find a happy medium that everybody in our neighborhood, our beautiful Rolling Hills neighborhood, can live with. And so I would like to say that if enough people are interested, I'm happy to host a town hall meeting in our neighborhood to bring our neighbors together so that when it comes back to an agenda, we're coming with solution-based suggestions for the city council. Because this city council cannot make the decision for you. This is our neighborhood. We need to take care of this. That's what we need to do. We need to get together. And so I'm happy to work with the city manager and have a town hall meeting set up so that we can come together and we can talk about what we're doing, and we can come to a compromise where both sides may not get everything they want, but we all walk away with something we can live with. That's a challenge. I hear a lot of emotion in this room this evening. And I love emotion, because it means you give a damn. So good for you. But we have to get past that. We have to get past just emotions. We have to get to a solution that's gonna let everybody here and everybody listening and me, I live on Sanctuary Drive, I count too. So I'm saying, if you're interested, I'm willing to host a town hall meeting where we can talk freely. You don't get two minutes. You don't, you know, we can have a substantive conversation about it, but I'll run the meeting. Okay? Okay, so that means I'm a very solution-oriented person, so if you're willing, I'm able. All right? If you're willing, I'm able. So when we come back to the city council, before this is agendized, I'd like to, a friendly amendment, Scott, to your, if that was a motion?
Well, it wasn't, wasn't a motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and agendize it.
She already said she'd agendize it.
Okay. So I would just, I would just like to then ask, to give us as a neighborhood, an opportunity to have a town hall meeting where we talk, we discuss, and hopefully we come back with some meaningful recommendations and a compromise.
I hope so.
To inform the city council on what's best for where we live.
I'm all for it. You let me know, of course, Madam Vice Mayor, when you're ready to go and I'll put her on the agenda as Councilman Tonason requested.
Okay. So, anyone interested in participating in such a meeting, please, I need you to provide me directly with your contact information. Okay? So we can all make sure that we're all equally represented, that we're there, you know, bring the kit, whatever. But let's, let's talk amongst ourselves as a neighborhood first. All right? And figure this out because this is not rocket science. Right? Not even close. All right? So thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman, Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Vice Mayor. And I think, you know, before, I mean, the way everything was going, the conversation was really good. Unfortunately, you know, the person that said that about Grande Circle, I didn't like that. I think if we're gonna have that meeting, if you're gonna have that meeting, some ground rules need to be set where you don't talk about other neighborhoods in, in that kinda way. So, I'm, I'm fine with having the meeting, with you having the meeting. I just think the ground rules need to be set about not making disparaging remarks, especially about areas like Grande Circle who are struggling.
Agreed.
All right.
We saw how emotional the, the young man was who came here, who lives in that neighborhood. It's out of bounds. So, thank you very much and thank everybody here and we'll get this done in the way that you suggested. Thank you. Madam Clerk? The consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers on the consent?
I don't have any cards on consent and there are no hands raised online for the consent calendar.
I'll entertain a motion to pass a consent calendar. And a second, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, that was 6-0, it's unanimous. Okay. Now we're gonna go to item 12, please.
Item 12, Landscape Oversight Committee Appointment Discussion. And our presenter is our city manager, David Gassaway.
Yeah. Mayor and city council, item for you here on item 12 is, is really just seeking some clarification. So, as the deputy clerk had mentioned, we're still looking for some candidates for the Landscape Oversight Committee. And in, in the processing of applications that we received on that, we found a little bit of a discrepancy in the guiding resolution. And so I'm just looking for your final, final guidance so that we can make this abundantly clear. Under the resolution that was adopted by city council, Resolution 2023-26, Establishing the Landscaping Oversight Committee Guidelines and Duties, under the Exhibit A, it sort of says two conflicting things. The first is, it talks about the application recruitment process and says that our standard process will be followed. As, as you all know, we have a selection committee which is a subcommittee of two council members that interview candidates for different committees and commissions and then they make recommendations to the mayor to make those appointments. However, later on in that resolution, it talks about the mayor and, and I'll quote, "The mayor and city council will appoint their respective committee members." And so we went back and looked at the video footage and the context of the conversation of the council at the time when, when you were guiding the creation of this committee was to potentially allow for council members by district then to appoint members to the Landscape Oversight Committee. So because of those, those two different things that are in this resolution, I'm simply here tonight asking for you all to have a quick discussion and give us clear guidance so that we can get this landscape committee up and running now that we do have applicants, I believe, in most all the districts.
I would like to hear from the committee who usually interviews in this case and then from everybody else afterwards. Yeah.
I'm fine with us picking our own. I picked one today.
You picked, okay.
You know, I mean, it's at the pleasure of the council, whatever you guys want, but we can do interviews, but I've got, I've got my person picked and I have a backup, so.
Councilwoman Panduro.
Yeah, so I agree. I think that the number two with regards to allowing each district rep to pick their own district rep for that committee-
Okay.
-was what I would find useful, just so that, so that I can also get to know my people in my area and then so that I can also review their, I know I would initially review because on the, on the committee, but I think it would be appropriate for each of my colleagues to review the residents who are applying within each district and allow them to make the recommendation to move forward with the, with that person.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not on the committee, okay?
But, no, no, go ahead.
I agree, though. I think we should all be able to pick. I know for District 4, I saw the name, but I'd probably need to talk to you more about that.
That's fine, yeah, thank you so much.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure who it is.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, so just a clarification. I, and I didn't have a chance to look at it on a, on a computer screen. It was a little screen and I couldn't quite read it. So what does the community expect? I know there was a link on the website. I assumed that was to the application, but, but what are their, what are their expectations? What do they think is happening?
Well, I can't speak for them, but I, I think generally speaking, it was, they were applying to be on the committee and, and the standard process would have been that all of those applicants then would have been interviewed by the selection committee and recommendations made. However, the context of the conversation from council when this was created was to do district-based. And so, you know, the, overall, as we sort of got to the end, it was a little unclear from a staff perspective and I wanted to just be crystal clear to make sure that we were doing exactly what it was that the council wanted in terms of the process for selecting the residents that would be on this committee.
Okay. And so did we give them a deadline to apply?
Yeah, there, there was a deadline to apply.
Okay. And that, that has passed, but then I thought I saw language that said there's an extension?
Yeah, we, we still, up, up to this time, I believe, council members Panduro and Tonason have folks that they've talked to in Districts 2 and 5, but as of, as of right now, and there was a couple that were interested in it, but ended up never applying. And so we sort of pushed out the date a couple of times because we, they, both of the council members from those districts were encouraging people to apply, but they, they weren't actually submitting their application to the clerk's office. And so then when it finally came time in conversation with the mayor, you know, of how to handle it, she said, "Well, let's just, let's just make the appointments and move." And it was at that time that we, as we were really looking at this, it was a little unclear and so I'm just here tonight seeking that clarification.
For me, what I would like to see happen is that, because I've kind of put it back out there too, that we were still taking applications. So if we could kind of give a hard deadline and then from there, a kind of a timeline, a short period of time, you know, give us a week for, you know, I wanted, would like to see all my applications that came in for my district and within a week, touch bases with them, call them, talk to them, and within a week, make a decision and a backup. So a timeline that's publicized.
That makes sense. Vice Mayor, do you?
I agree with my colleagues in terms of us choosing our respective representative on the Landscape Lighting and Maintenance District Oversight Team. Now, are we choosing one person or one and a backup?
I, I believe it's written just for one.
Is it just one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay, let's do that. And as Councilwoman Williams directed-
So, can I just get clarification as your city attorney? So I, what I hear, and just to verify, it sounds like the council has expressed an interest to keep the resolution as is. Because the resolution as it currently stands says that for recruitment and application, each individual needs to fill out an application using the process used for all other existing city boards, commissions and committees to be utilized to conduct the recruitment of applicants for the committee. But once that is done, that appointment committee will conduct the interviews and they can or can't-
No, that's where it stops.
Okay, they'll just take the applications and then the selection will be up to each district member and the mayor will get the at-large position?
Yes.
Okay. So just to also clarify then, the selection does say that the candidate for the committee shall complete and submit the applications to the city per instructions on the vacancy advertisement. So if a district does not have an applicant, a person can't, under this resolution that you all passed, a person can't just be appointed out of thin air. They, the person would have to have submitted an application. Now, it could be an application with just their name on it, I guess, but they would have to have submitted the application. So to Councilmember Williams' point, if a district has someone they want to appoint, then they, they have to follow the, you can open up the application process again, have that person fill out an application and then the district, the council member for that district can appoint them. I just wanna make sure we are crystal clear so we don't have to bring this back to you all.
I think that's fair. I think that at the very least, we need to have the application turned in. And so even if, say for instance, today, somebody, you know, I wanna choose somebody, but they still, you're saying they still have to fill out an application and they are allowed to do so at this time?
Yeah, they would have to follow the process used by all other existing city boards, commissions and committees, including the advertisement in the Daily Republic, posted on the city's website and posted it on the Civic Center complex meeting notice boards.
Okay, well now I might have a problem.
Right. That's why I'm asking-
I might have a problem with that.
We can redo the-
Because, yeah, because we, this has been an extended period of time and this group needs to get to work. So if people were, I didn't know that we'd have to republicize it and repost it on the website. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that part. I think that at this point, you know, if, we probably all have a good idea of whoever we're gonna choose, but to go through the whole process again is, I think, an act of futility. I mean, at this point, I think this council should just be given the opportunity to choose the representative that we want and that person shall fill out an application, just so the city has their contact information, we know who they are, we can confirm they're from the district that they say that they're from. But that's the application process that I'd like to see to this extent. I'd like to see us get to choosing our, whoever is gonna be our rep in our district within a week, like, like Councilwoman Williams said, and let that person, if they have not filled out, if they accept, they'll fill out the application and this committee can get going and move forward. It's a lot of work to be done.
Councilman Tonason.
What do we, the mayor's already made five picks. What, what do we do with them?
Yeah, they're gonna have to be told that we changed the process.
Because the process was based on, I mean, you just have to rescind because the process was based on an inappropriate protocol.
Yes.
Yep.
And if I can make a recommendation, I'll also defer to the city manager. But so basically, I think the, my, my recommendation is the easiest fix to doing this, but again, this is a policy decision for the city manager and the council. But what I've heard is Vice Mayor Bertoni saying she doesn't like, or wants to change the system so it's not as cumbersome. There's a number of different ways that you can go about it and so I kind of don't wanna step into the city manager's purview or the city council's purview. But I think an easy fix would to keep, to keep the application recruitment process the same, where it does say that, you know, the person has to apply the same way you would do for city boards, it has to be advertised, but then under selection, you could just say, "The mayor and city council will appoint their respective committee members from their district." And if you delete the, the requirement that the candidates for the committee shall complete and submit applications to the city per instructions on the vacancy ad, on the vacancy advertisement, you could change the language to say if no one from that district submits an application or if the council member for that district is not satisfied with the applicants, applications received for their district, they are free to appoint whoever they like. Right? That way you have the notice requirement, but if you don't either get an applicant for your district, which happened in two districts, or, you know, you get one and you're not pleased with that person, you can go out and appoint whoever. Frank, because this is an advisory committee, so they serve at the pleasure of the council, so you're really just imposing whatever rules you wanna impose. There's no requirement as to how you do it. It's just, right now, the resolution, you, the rules you set up for yourselves, as Vice Mayor Bertoni is saying, you feel it's too cumbersome. So this is just my advice on how you might wanna-
Well, I, I think what I heard from the vice mayor was at this point in time, we're not gonna go out and re-advertise all of this because we wanna get this committee going. So if, if that's the, the desire of the council, we can distribute the applications, hopefully make appointments on the 19th and we'll bring that back with an amended resolution based on what we heard here tonight, if that'll work with the council.
So, I'm just talking this out loud, so... Because the truth is, I don't have anyone picked. I was gonna wait to get all the applications before I looked at anything. So I don't have anyone picked where I could be like, "You're picked, go fill out an application", da-da-da. So I wanna make sure that the process is transparent and clear for any age group, anyone, you know, that normally doesn't, you know, you know, I don't know, I just wanna make sure it's an, an open and clear process. So, the process that was just laid out, does that mean the application is still open right now and it, we can give it a close date?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking at Esther, just to confirm.
And we would know what that close date is, like in a few minutes, so that we can get that word out?
Yeah, we, we would close it in maybe a week, a week's time or so, so that we can move quickly. Again, hearing the desires of the vice mayor and the fact that it has been out for a few months now. And so I, I think from each district, there's, there's four or five applicants from each district except Districts 2 and 5. And I know that council members Panduro and Tonason have been working hard to, you know, rally people that would be interested and there's been names thrown out there, they just haven't yet applied. And so I think giving them that hard deadline is definitely a, a good motivator to say, "Hey, it's either this date or no date."
And just one more point of clarification is that you can feel free to select somebody who you think would be good and say, "You need to get your application in today, period." Because there were some people at the last listening tour who sound really knowledgeable and eager about the whole LLMD, you know, bucket of, I'm not gonna say worms, but, you know, but I'm just, but, so, so that's, we can do that too, is that if you see somebody who you, who you think would be great, call them up tomorrow and say, "Hey, get your application in, it takes two minutes." Is that, is that correct? Okay. Just wanna make that point of clarification.
Councilwoman Williams, I'd also say that when we started this process, whenever it was, a couple of months ago, whatever, there are applications waiting for you now, for you to look at. So perhaps you could look at those too. Does that, does that work?
No, it does. I just, I have a sense of what I believe is fair in my mind.
Yes.
And to me, it is, you know, I've, I've been on the other side of that, where I've applied, I wanted something and the person, whether already, another person was already picked.
Oh, right.
So in my mind, it is to lay everything, you know, it's a closing date, I lay it all out and I start from there. That's my mind of what is fair. So, in my process.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah.
Good enough. You got the direction?
Yep, feel good. Thank, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. We're gonna go to item 13 now.
Item 13, Resolution 2023-232 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, allowing the City of Fairfield to hire Lynette Sime as a part-time senior transportation technician, retired and new intent without a six-month break in service. And our presenter is Human Resources Director, Farbo Pirozman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council. We're here to ask for the waiver of the normally 180 days between someone, an employee-
Speak up.
The mic is on.
Those speakers are not working, so there's only one speaker, so it just-
Should it just be louder?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. But I'll, I'll- But I'll, I'll joke aside, so.
Howdy.
How you doing? CalPERS normally requires 180 days break between when an employee retires and they could come back and help us out again. But in the same regulations, there is an exception, and the city council can decide as a collective body to bring somebody back sooner than the 180 days. And we really do need someone in the Transportation Division, which you'll hear much more about in a second, on item 14. And Lynette Symes retired, she's a transportation tech, she will retire actually on September 7th. We want to bring her back September 27th. One of the programs she's going to be working on is microtransit and also the fare increase. So we would really appreciate if you can approve that 180-day waiver. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Do we have any public speakers on this item?
I have no cards and no hands raised online.
All right. Any questions, council? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Moved.
A second.
By the vice mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now we're going to move on to public hearings.
Public hearing and Resolution 2023-233 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting fare structure changes for Fast Connect. And our presenter is Transportation Manager Diane Feinstein.
Who else?
Nope.
Where's my, uh... Did you have it open? Oh, there it is. Got it. Ooh. You have a mouse. It's not. There it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Do I have the same problem?
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor and city council. I'm Diane Feinstein, and I oversee operations of Fast, the city's transit and paratransit provider. Tonight, prior to holding the public hearing, I'll be providing you with a brief overview as to the reasoning behind staff's recommendations to reduce fares so that it streamlines riders' use of both our fixed route system and our new Fast Connect microtransit. As you know, public transportation nationwide was hugely impacted by the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. In December 2020, city council directed staff to complete what's called a comprehensive operational analysis, or for short, that we call it COA. And it's a 10-year roadmap for how fast would operate to that, in a way that's sustainable and balances the needs of the riders while continuing to be high-functioning and sustainable post-pandemic. Last September, council approved implementation of COA recommendations, and Fast staff has spent the last year working to implement the initial recommendations over this 10-year period. And these included implementing a fare increase and initiating the new microtransit service, which, as Councilwoman Williams said, was deployed for the first time today in Cordelia, Green Valley, and northeast Fairfield. As part of the COA approval, city council approved new fares to offset increasing operational and fuel costs. These bus fares increased fares by 25 cents for adults and youth, and they increased by 15 cents the cost for senior disabled and Medicare riders to use the service. And DART, our paratransit for ADA-eligible riders, increased from $3.50 to $4 per ride. Microtransit rides were originally set at $2 for all riders, adult, youth, seniors, disabled. Staffs recommending that Fast Connect microtransit fares mirror the current fixed route fares. So that would mean that fares would be reduced from $2 to $1.75 for youth, and from $2 to $1 for senior disabled Medicare-eligible riders. And we are also recommending that fares be free for riders 80 and older. So a DART fares and adult fares currently at $2 would not be impacted by the, the changes being recommended. So the estimated cost for making this change is estimated at $50,000. However, the loss of fare revenue would be recouped over two years by fast cost savings implementation to eliminate fare passes. We're eliminating paper passes for a variety of reasons. By late 2024, early 2025, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's going to be mandating that all Bay Area transportation agencies use the Clipper Card versus paper passes or, or other means of payment other than cash. So as part of implementing the July fare increases, we proactively eliminated paper passes to save up to $25,000 per year for the cost of printing. These passes cost a lot of money to print and have encoding on them. And, and there's a lot of staff time that's involved in just maintaining inventory, just tracking the passes and things, because they are like cash. Eliminating paper passes also was done to encourage riders to move now to the Clipper Card, and it has been very successful. It was implemented starting in July. Riders will, like I said, will still have the option to use cash to pay the fares. However, the Clipper Card is better than using cash because use of the Clipper Card allows for one free transfer for the rider if they're transferring, like for microtransit to fixed route. So it, it allows for more of a seamless ride for people using both systems. And we do anticipate a lot of people to use both systems now. So I do want to take this opportunity as well to announce that we completed our first successful day, as I said. September's going to be our soft launch, so we can evaluate the system this month with our contractor, who we've been working with the last year, to, to have a phone app, and also with our contractor, MB Transportation, who, who operates the buses. So it's been a joint venture to kind of coordinate and get everything done, but it's, it's, it's coming together. So Fast Connect's going to combine paratransit and microtransit, and general on-demand microtransit service. So people who are ADA-eligible will also be able to ride with just the general public. So it's going to offer a lot of cost savings, both operationally and fuel. It costs a lot less to operate buses than it does, to operate smaller vans or 12 to 14 vehicle, passenger vehicles. So with Fast Connect, we're eliminating routes 2, 4, and 8, which reduce the use and higher maintenance costs associated with the larger buses. We also work closely with Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District and maintained a school tripper in Cordelia called the Eight Tripper, or AT, to meet the needs of students needing transportation to, primarily to Rodriguez and Green Valley Middle School. Residents can schedule, and this is a little bit of a change, can, can schedule a ride one day in advance, the general public. Initially, it had been just an hour, kind of like Uber and Lyft works, where you just, you do it as you need it. But we have a lot of people that need it to get to work, and they need to have, be able to plan a little bit in a, ahead if they're, the service runs from 6, starting 6:30 in the morning, and it's, it, a lot of, some of the people that you have used the service today needed a ride at 6:30. So this gives them a little more leeway. So that's the type of thing that we're kind of working out, a few of the issues that we may not have been able to anticipate until the service started. And we are providing three stop, drop-off locations at base, same as we did before, David Grant Medical Center, the Base Commissary, and the Travis Call Center. Working, I've been in contact and actually met with the Call Center employees, who are all ADA, either disabled, many of them are blind, so they, and they depend on getting service from the train station, train station onto base or other places in Fairfield. So that's, that's been something we've worked very hard to accommodate. We're also undergoing rebranding. You'll see our bright blue vehicles that you mentioned. All prior paratransit vehicles that were just used for our DART service have been painted the beautiful blue that you see here and been rebranded with the Fast Connect logo. So Fast Connect will serve as our, both our paratransit service and on-demand general public service. We also purchased five small vans that we just received last week, and they are in the process of being painted for Fast Connect service. Lastly, we rebranded our bus stop signage, adding on-demand microtransit signage at our established bus stops. And we'll be returning, staff will be returning in October to officially unveil the service, which will include marketing initiatives, that includes a ribbon cutting. So more to come on, on the official unveiling. We were encouraged, we had 35 rides on our first day, so we were really happy with that. And I definitely encourage you to try the system this month, and please, please, provide your feedback, because, you know, I've talked to a lot of people in the last month, so has staff, and that feedback has been helpful so far. So I'll be happy to take any questions before the public hearing is held.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers? Madam Clerk?
I have no cards and no hands raised online.
All righty, doesn't look like there is anybody here. Nobody here, I guess. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back for questions. Yes, Councilwoman Williams, Miss Proud Owner of a bunch of...
I really am proud. And by the way, those pictures don't do that bus justice. That is a gorgeous bus. Yeah. So, a few things. On the app, I really like the app, it's very easy to kind of follow, but then there was a, where it asks for a credit card, but then when I tried to book with the credit card, it wouldn't go. So, but it sounds like cash or the Clipper Card is the way to go with this, right? One of those two ways?
Yes, that, that's what I would recommend. There is a connection on the, that's one of the glitches that came out today with the credit card, because we actually have it linked with another device, so people shouldn't be able to enter their credit card information there. So I appreciate you bringing that up, but we did notice that today. And there's a, a few glitches that are going to be worked out this month, but that's the kind of feedback that I'd like to get.
Got it. And then the other question is, it, it, it looked like every 15 minutes I could book a trip to Safeway to get my creamer. Is, is that right?
To where?
To, to Safeway. Is that kind of right, that anyone can expect a 15-minute increments to book?
It's going to be somewhere between 15 and 30 minutes. What I can tell you is during the hours of 6:30 to 7:45 PM, ride, people can schedule rides, there'll be seven vehicles out there all the time between the two zones. So we, we are having plenty of vehicles because we want people to be happy trying the service, and we actually increased the number, and we'll continue to monitor, but drivers can have the ability to move from zone to zone depending on the demand.
Okay, so two last questions. So for, for people that are kind of not so great with technology or technology nervous, can they just call a 1-800 number and you all just walk them through?
We're doing a couple of things in our, our dispatch. They, they can call the dispatch number, and that number is in the app if they have trouble using the app. We are also having sessions, 1:30 to 5:00 this Thursday and this Friday, and next week, if we need to, too, we'll have some, and we'll, we'll post it on our social media to help people know how to, to use the app and things.
Good, because I do feel like we, we have a portion of community that's just, that might just be nervous about tinkering with it. And then my last question is, is there a feedback link on your website where, where I can send you all messages all the time?
Yes. And we're also doing, I can, I can get you that information, and they, we are also doing a survey, too, that will be part of the app.
Got it.
That hasn't been put out as of yet.
And I'm sort of kidding. It's really for the community. I want the community to be able to give you feedback. I have a very vocal district, so I want them to be able to give you all the feedback that you have, to tweak it and refine it.
The people that use our system have not been afraid to say what they like, what they don't like, what they would like to have. And there's certain things, because this is a brand-new product, that we're, it's going to get better and better. Eventually, the system will allow you to make, it will tell you how long it'll be to connect from microtransit to fixed route, that, but that'll take a couple months to get all that implemented in place.
Congratulations on a good first day.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to entertain a motion. Making a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will go on to item 15, please.
Item 15, public hearing and first reading and introduction of ordinance 2023-11 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, establishing a safe parking program, permit process, and adopting operational standards. And our presenter is Homeless Services Management Analyst, April Cobb.
Good evening, mayor and vice mayor, council members. My presentation tonight is going to be on a safe parking ordinance. Homelessness continues to be a growing concern in our city. The 2022 Solano County point in time shows that 1,179 people are homeless in Solano County. Of that 1,179, approximately 300 are homeless in the city of Fairfield, and 74 of those individuals are living in their vehicles. What is safe parking? Safe parking, thank you. Oh, did I do that, or did, oh, okay. What is safe parking? Safe parking is a program that gives a temporary overnight safe parking location for individuals and families living in their vehicles. The goal of the safe parking is to create stability for participants, and it gives them access to restroom facilities, resources, social service programs, and other supports to transition them into supportive, stable housing. In 2022, city council adopted urgency... In 2022, City Council adopted Urgency Ordinance 2022-11, implementing a temporary shelter service program to be offered with existing churches, places of worship, and other assembly use to respond to the immediate need for shelter for those experiencing homelessness in Fairfield. Safe parking aligns with that urgency ordinance and creates a pathway for property owners to participate in reducing homelessness and the impacts of homelessness. The Safe Parking Ordinance will establish performance standards and permitting guidelines to govern the operation of safe parking host sites. Some of the standards, sorry, some of the standards in this ordinance for the host site are participant, the participant screening process, security monitoring, and emergency plan for safety, hours of operation with a minimum of 10 hours of operating, 10 vehicles per site, a waste disposal plan, and all host sites must comply with the current nuisance laws to show good neighboring. In order to receive a permit for safe parking, a host site would need to complete an application, submit the application with the site plan and operations plan to the homeless services manager or designate, and agree to a one-year term of conditions. The one-year term would coincide with the annual fire and life safety inspections of the primary use to the, the primary use to ensure host site is compliant with all city zoning guidelines. We do have a couple of success stories of some of the cities near us. Mountain View, California, has seven lots with 50 parking spaces throughout their city. They've served over 150 people using their vehicles for shelter, with 13% of those individuals being permanently housed. The city of Walnut Creek, California, also has one parking site with 12 spaces. They have a 40% success rate of connecting individuals to housing resources and then into permanent housing. I'd like to thank the Community Development Department, Fire, and Police Departments for coordinating and bringing this ordinance together. In an effort to reduce homelessness and the impacts of homelessness, staff is requesting that the council establish an ordinance for a safe parking program, permit process, and adopt operational standards for host sites. And I will take questions at this time.
I'm gonna just go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? Do you have any cards?
I don't have any cards and no hands raised online.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And we have questions. Councilman Vaccaro?
Yeah, thank you, April. Very good presentation. So I, since we're past the ordinance, but has there been any research about where these sites might be or possibly here in the city of Fairfield?
So we are looking to nonprofit organizations. We already worked with some service providers, so we'll reach out to those service providers. But anyone can apply that has a parking space that they own, and we're willing to open it up to anybody to help this cause.
I know Councilwoman Pandoro and myself. I know, city on the two-by-two committee, I think this is actually something that we'll probably talk about there, this is something we can do as a city, because as you said, 300, it's probably even more than that living in the city of Fairfield. So, thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Councilwoman Pandoro?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions with regard, because I know that, so I understand that there is a need. As the City Council or who, I guess, decides the limit, or how many parking, I know I can't ask you how many of these we need, but is there like a cap that we can place or in terms of the number of these lots? And I guess I ask that because, I mean, as we heard today, some parts of Fairfield, you know, are, yeah. And, yeah, I just want to make sure that they're in other places, not just all on one side of town.
Right. So it's our hope that we're gonna put it out there and see who comes. We don't have like a set person that we're specifically looking at. We're hopeful that it will be all over Fairfield. It's definitely needed in all areas.
Thank you. And then with regards to resources, also, I know, I mean, I'm sure that there's gonna be different types of families and different individuals. So can you speak a little bit to, I guess, the services are gonna be provided by the service providers? Is that how that's gonna work?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, April. I like this a lot. I remember talking to two different women that were experiencing homelessness and living in their cars, and talking about feeling unsafe, you know, like needing to close your eyes, get some sleep, but feeling, you know, the, just that they really couldn't sleep, they really couldn't rest. So that really solves this problem. Not really solves it, but it helps. So what comes to mind, though, is I saw restrooms, and I don't know if I missed it, I just want to make sure that this would also include showers, because dignity is an issue, being able to take a shower. Is that part of the plan as well? It doesn't seem like that would be built in an ordinance, though.
Right. So some of the, depending on, so it would depend on the service provider, the one who applies for the application. If they have a facility that already has showers, we would definitely want that and encourage that. However, there are some situations where they, there may just be porta-potties or a wash station, and so in the ordinance, we just made it clear that we would just like a waste disposal plan for that type of situation. So we're hopeful that we'll have people come forth with the same mission and vision to help the homeless, and we'll hope that they have the facility to do that.
And if we pass this tonight, when this, if we pass it, during a launch, would there be like a pilot launch, so there would be best practices kind of developed and kind of be able to take some issues and kind of turn it around before having these all over, you know, expanding it out?
Right. So I've done a lot of research. Again, the two cities that we've worked with, they've implemented some best practices. I also did some research in Los Angeles, and so the plan, if you approve it tonight, would be to roll it out. I kept it to a minimum of 10 vehicles, so that it's not a huge task to take on for the host site. So I feel confident in just rolling it out.
Thank you for your thorough research.
Sorry, one clarification, maximum of 10 vehicles?
Maximum.
Yeah, maximum 10 vehicles on any one site.
Anything else, Councilwoman? Good? Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. So moved in a second? All in favor? Aye. That's 6-0 vote, four. And so we want to close in memory of, please?
We want to close this meeting in memory of Gizmo. This is June's brother and like a second brother to me. And, I mean, I guess the best way I can describe Gizmo is that he is a man after God's own heart. That would give you the shirt off of his back. He knew that I was, that I'm a fireplace girl. So every year around, maybe this time, maybe a little bit closer to Halloween, I would come home from work, and guess what's in my driveway? A cord of wood. Just without, you know, just that kind of guy. Now, my son knew that he's gonna be moving the cord, so that's on the other side of the coin.
This year, he's gonna be bringing a cord, too.
Exactly. But Gizmo was just that kind of guy, a man after God's own heart. So God bless you, Gizmo. Via condios. That means go with God.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. And God bless you, Gizmo. And we're closed until the next meeting.